Let's call the meeting to order for the Laporte County Commissioners for Wednesday, June 16, 2021. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ben Dermody, would you line us off on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mathias.
Did you say my name?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Present.
All three Commissioners present.
Thank you. Consider the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Consider approval of June 2, 2021, minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims, please.
Oh, Commissioners, we have sensitive tonight. Payroll ending period, the period ending June 4, 2021, in the amount of $1,133,282. And operating expense claims in the amount of $1,026,769.64.
Move to approve the claims as presented.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Tim, if you could bring your microphone just a little bit closer to your...
You're serious, because if I'm getting almost reverb, you...
Yeah, well, I'm old and I can't hear very good.
It does sound, well, maybe just us up here, but it sounds pretty soft up here. Oh, okay.
Combat tours will do that to you. Although I have to admit, the PA system is so much nicer. I want to make sure I thought, thank AJ and Matt and Graham from IT. Guys did a good job. We've been needing this for a long time. So, and we don't have feedback tonight.
That's good.
Excellent. Thank you. Next on the list will be public comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, either present or... I see nobody on Zoom. Ravenhead, come up, state your name and address.
I'm Edward Seal. Address is 406 Burlington Beach Road, Valverde, Indiana 46383. Here to speak on behalf of the home team of the Laporte County tonight in regards to an email I received from Commissioner Mathias with the administration of the RAP...
ARP.
...funding for rental assistance. The home team sees a need for rental assistance direly in the coming future in the Laporte County, and we would like to support the request that was sent out. However, we fear that the courts may not be appropriately suited to administer the funding, just because I don't think that that is something that they do on a regular basis. The home team has partners with the Township Trustee and United Way and organizations that are already administering rental assistance, and we'd be more than happy to help the county as they discuss, you know, possibilities of partnering with some of the organizations in the home team. But we just wanted to be here to support the need for the rental assistance and to help with any organization that may need to happen.
Thank you for your comments. We'll receive them.
And may I ask a question? Since you are an expert at homelessness and the need for rental assistance, could you just give us a snapshot of what's happening, boots-on-the-ground snapshot of what's happening? The moratorium will be up on the 30th, and what I'm hearing is that it's our, even though the moratorium hasn't clicked in yet, it's already, there's a, there's a big problem in this community for, for families who are right on the margin. So could you give us kind of a snapshot about that?
Yes. Families are continuing to fall behind in their rent and utility payments. United Way has created a Laporte County fund already administered through three of the Township Trustees, and they're meeting requests for that and matching funds, but there's a bigger need out there. The state has received the Indiana Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, which is being processed through IHCD. They could pay up to 12 months of their rent, but it's, unfortunately, the approvals are just so slow.
Right, yeah.
People aren't getting the money that they need. So, once the moratorium ends, our fear is that the evictions are going to start processing and going through the courts faster than the money's flowing to the people who need it. So this could certainly be a Band-Aid to help bridge the gap until the larger pool of funding is made available.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, if you will, maybe you want to stay around. I believe Judge Greta is scheduled in later. She and Judge Thorne have already had conversations about what kind of process can be put together, because you're right, the judges won't necessarily administer. As I understand the proposal, it'll be in tandem with the trustees, nonprofit organizations, and others who are better able to do that, and then make recommendations to the judges. So you may want to be here. I think she's scheduled, she and Judge Thorne met this past week, to try to work out a process that is workable and that includes social service agencies and the trustees.
Great.
Thank you. Anybody else present for a public comment? Anybody on Zoom for public comment? Seeing none, public comment will be over. We'll move on to department head comments and reports. Any department heads?
Mr. Prime, President, members of the Commission, good evening. I've had the, well, I didn't have the opportunity, but our esteemed colleague Bailey McGrath had circulated our semi-annual report. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to, well, receive that this evening. What I wanted to do primarily was just give a snapshot overview quickly, but before doing that, we, it is with a heavy heart that we acknowledge Bailey's departure from the office planned for early July. We, I just wanted to acknowledge her lifting capacity and the, her ability to adapt to a very complex industry filled with challenges that are quite often varied and, and require the ability to adapt and apply her educational skills. A lot of the projects that we were successful announcing over this past year and a half, I just simply could not be more pleased with her ability to support the office in such a professional manner, and wanted to absolutely wish her the best going forward. So, again, it will be difficult to fill her shoes, however, I wanted to wish her the absolute very best. It will be impossible to fill Bailey's shoes, quite frankly. She's, she's done such a good job and raised that bar in the office. Noteworthy, the COVID that this, this county, I believe, had, simply could not have demonstrated a more perfect way to handle and address such a large challenge. Bailey was front and center at that back office support on a, sometimes more than once-a-day update to Laporte County's website, keeping that COVID information up to date to the minute in some cases. But there, week, day in, day out, and, and just did an exceptional job and also played a, just a monumental role in us getting the website rolled out, keeping the, the, those that, to play a monumental role, keeping our website up to date, just keeping that group together, keeping them informed of changes. And again, just a shout out, and we, we're going to miss her without question. The best part of this is she's not going that far and will remain in close contact and continue to work with Bailey. As, again, without, I just thought I'd touch on a few of the high points. Housing, housing, housing continues to be just one of the backbone components of a successful economic development strategy, and when retaining the services of Green Street, the implementation phase of the housing study has always been front and center to us. We, in economic development, do not criticize planners. We, they are integral in our process, and I give a shout out to Mitch Bishop, has been integral in allowing us to make sure that all of the discussions with regard to housing have had his touch, his direct involvement, and, but we, we are, I'm, I'm just very pleased to announce that, in paying such close attention to what the, the development process will hold coming forward here, is real estate that is put together with the development community, eliminating the barriers that stand in the way, and getting deals negotiated. It requires a willing seller of real estate, and it requires a well-financed developer that has the financial capacity to, to get the project done and completed. So, that's where, in economic development, the rubber's meeting the road when you have a seller of real estate negotiating a transaction and getting the documents signed, and we are just very, simply very pleased to be, have not only a couple, but multiple developers looking and multiple sellers looking to negotiate those transactions on real estate. So extremely pleased about the activity level, and again, I believe we're already scheduled, we'll be giving, we'll be hosting Green Street, who will do a detailed job of summarizing the results of the housing study. So, lastly, the broadband task force has made just tremendous advancements with regard to Yates Engineering. We, as late as today, have been in discussions about their approach, their recommendations, and the strategy to go forward. Because of the successful grant written by Bailey McGrath and, and her ability to deliver that, those resources back to the task force, we're very pleased to be able to, to move in the direction of incorporating some of their recommendations and to our direction forward. So, again, timing is everything in this regard. We could not be in a better position to be coming with some aggressive recommendations and, again, just timely, very timely direction on applying for some of the federal funds and state funds that will be made available. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time this evening, and we look forward to the presentation.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. Any other department heads have a report? Department heads? Going once, going twice?
I'm picking.
Somebody talking?
Yes, Joe Grohl of the Laporte County.
Hey, Joe, go ahead.
You gonna hear me okay, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
If you could, everybody could. That's a joke, you can laugh now. Anyway, I know how Jeb Bush felt now. Anyway, I was at a funeral home after work today, and I was talking with Tanya from Cutler's, and I let her know about something that's happening with FEMA, and I don't know if it's been broached with the Commissioners at all, or if it's been made public to where everybody's aware, but FEMA does have a program that reimburses up to $9,000 for funeral costs for people who passed away from COVID. And from what I hear, it's a pretty simplistic deal. Some people, it only took two weeks to get their recovery money, and you can get this off the FEMA website, and I've been doing, you know, the death certificates from veterans, so pretty much got the jump on. I just wanted to share that with you and the general public.
Thank you, Joe. It's something worth looking into. Any other department heads on Zoom? I don't even see any. Any, anybody else here? Okay, if not, not seeing no one, we'll move forward to requests. Consider permission to approach the council to lease a vehicle for adult protective services new hire. You don't look like John Lake. Thank goodness.
Thank goodness. No, I'm Christine Harlow. I am the Director of Adult Protective Services Division of the Prosecutor's Office. John Lake is at a conference, IPAC Conference, down in Indy, so you've had me tonight. For two weeks, and then I retire, by the way.
Oh, man. So rare.
Nice.
Yeah. So, yes, the request tonight is just to be able to approach council to lease a vehicle. Council did already give approval for us to hire a new position, so it's, it's just a basic request to approach.
Cool. So you need permission to go to the council meeting? I would entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Christine, and good luck with that, and with retirement also.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have consider permission to approach the council to spend out of non-reverting fund, Rick Brown, MS4, downtown Rick Brown.
Yes, I'm, I am requesting permission, and I didn't want to really waste anybody's time, so I'd had a brief conversation with my liaison, Mr. Terry Gardner, and he's just briefly aware of what I'm going to be trying to do. So I'm just letting you know that he gave me approval from his end, anyway, so I guess it's kind of up to you folks to say yea or nay on if I may approach the council.
Yeah, we had talked about it briefly, and I'd suggested go through us, go to the council. I would entertain a motion to let Mr. Brown talk to the council.
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good luck with that, Rick. Consider request to rename the animal shelter. As President of the Animal Shelter Board, at our last meeting, we voted unanimously, since Jane Bernard spent 36 years here, I believe.
31.
Yeah, 31 years to run our animal shelter, and what an amazing, amazing job, dedication. We voted to change the name from the Laporte County Animal Shelter to Jane Bernard Animal Adoption Center. We want to change the sign. We've already got a price on that. We've got the money. We just need permission from the Commissioners to change the name, and if, if you don't think that's worthy, then you ain't even paying attention.
That would be a great remembrance for her. The amount of work she did was so, so, was so amazing and all the different things, just insane the amount of work she contributed. I'd be more than happy to make that motion.
I think we all would like to, to sponsor this motion. If you've spent five minutes with Jane Bernard in your lifetime, it is five minutes well-spent. She is a generous, kind, and caring individual who not only cares for humans, but has the same attitude towards the animals of our community, and I don't think there would be anyone who would disagree with this motion.
Yeah, if you listen to the radio in the mornings, you used to have, call in, as you talk about the pet of the day and their name and everything.
Yeah, just really creative.
It was pretty amazing. At least they had something on the radio station there to listen to. All, we have a motion in the second. Consider this motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Look, that, this is shown to be unanimous. Under old business, consider opting out, pay attention how this goes, consider opting out of proposed Attorney General settlement of opioid litigation to permit separate cities slash counties, separate negotiations in litigation to proceed Doug BG Esquire, with his name on a brick now.
Jane was kind to lawyers, too, believe it or not.
She did have that fault, yes.
Yeah, that's true. I've been serving as Laporte County's representative in opioid litigation, in which Laporte County was part of a class in a lawsuit filed in Ohio. Our lawyer, our attorneys are Cohen, Millad, and Indianapolis, and I'm going to try to simplify this the best I can, because this is really, really complex litigation. So we have litigation pending in Ohio and some bankruptcies in Delaware that are associated with this. Now, what happened was many, I think 70-something municipalities and government, local governments in Indiana filed a class action suit against Johnson &amp; Johnson, many of the manufacturers, as well as distributors of opioids, based upon the practices that they engaged in and seeking damages to help make reparations to the citizens and some of the treatment, et cetera, et cetera. There are billions of dollars at play. Now, the Indiana Attorney General then filed a suit against some of the distributors, excuse me, manufacturers and some of the distributors, but the defendants don't match exactly in each case, okay? Then, now, in the Ohio litigation, they're negotiating, they've been negotiating for a long time, and there's not a settlement forthcoming anytime soon, and I can't tell you what those numbers would be. Indiana Legislature then, this spring, passed a statute saying, okay, wait a minute, all the counties are included in the Indiana Attorney General's lawsuit, okay? Now, under that legislation, whatever award, whatever settlement they come out with, the money's divided differently, and the way the money's divided is, let me find it here, 70% of the settlement funds go to the FSSA. Follow me. 50% of that 70% goes directly to the state of Indiana. Then, the, out of the remaining 30%, 15% goes directly to the state, and then 15% goes to local governments, okay? So the difference is, we don't know how much we're going to get in either way, but under the Attorney General's lawsuit, the state gets the bigger cuts before it gets to Laporte County. Now, keep in mind, the FSSA is going to be divided in districts for distribution of the funds, but again, the state's getting 50% of it. So I think it's likely Laporte County would receive more money if it remained in the class action lawsuit. The way the Indiana statute is drafted, we're automatically included unless we opt out, and the Commissioners should have a resolution in front of them which opts out of that litigation. And I have to do certain things to make sure the resolution gets to certain places if the Commission so decides to do so, and there's a, there's a distinct time deadline by which we have to opt out. So I'm asking the Commission for a decision tonight. My recommendation is that the county opt out and we remain in the class action that we've engaged with for years.
Mr. Friedman, have you reviewed this?
Yes, I have. Mr. Bees and I have spoken, and we concur fully on the benefits of opting out. The, the separate litigation that's being run by Cohen and Millad offers better benefits, we believe, to cities and counties than the Attorney General's litigation, and I saw something, I just saw that city councils in West Lafayette and Lafayette voted this past Monday to move forward and do their opt-out, and we, we hear that's occurring with a number of cities and counties around the state, so we are recommending the opt-out of this particular settlement that the AG has, has recommended.
Mr. President, I move to approve the, the opting out to obligate additional future negotiations and funds that would be beneficial to Laporte County.
So I have a, I have some questions still. The, if we don't opt out, there's zero cost to the taxpayers as far as litigation costs at this point. It would just, we would just get whatever the Attorney General settled for, we would just get a check for that, admittedly less, but at least there's no legal fees going out, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And what are, has there been any calculations related to what our legal costs may be, you know, trying to juxtapose the two, of staying in versus staying out? Exactly how much do we, extra do we stand to gain versus potentially lose?
It's, it's almost impossible. In my opinion, legal fees are not really relevant here in that the defendants that are included in the class action are greater and more inclusive than in, than the defendants included in the AG's action. So I think the dollars will be larger in the class action suit, okay? So when you boil it down, I, I believe the net to the county will be larger in the class action suit, and again, we're, we're trying to predict what will happen.
Trying to predict, yeah, okay. But there, of course, is the potential that it could be less.
It could be, but I think it's highly unlikely.
Okay.
Because of the parties that were named, and the other factor here, excuse me, I forgot to mention this. So the legislation also says that the county is not included in any lawsuit filed after July 1, 2021, okay? So we don't get a dime, and the, and the AG's office has not included some defendants. So the defendants that are included in the class action suit are not included, the AG suit, but they might be sued later, and if they sue, if they're sued later by the AG, we don't get a dime.
And keep in mind, too, this is on contingency, so it's not as if you've got legal fees going out at this point. The, the, the deal that was arranged and negotiated between Cohen and Millad is similar in a number of communities. I believe Marion County's going to be opting out as well, so you, you don't have risk on this, but frankly, the Attorney General settlement offers very little for local cities and towns and counties. It offers far more for the state, and that's the real reason to opt out.
Okay.
We have a second, or a motion to accept this.
I, I had a motion on the floor.
Yeah, she did motion. I'll second, so we can move to vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consider appointment of financial advisor for an initial engagement regarding circulation of lost revenues as a result of the pandemic recession in connection with the ARP funding. We've had workshop on this. We haven't really discussed it amongst ourselves, but I think we know who the players are, and if you're prepared at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we remain with Carl Sander, who has been our financial advisor in the county for a great number of years and knows our history, and I think he would be able to give us the, the most accurate view of lost revenue in regards to the pandemic, which is a necessary number for us to know so that we can reach out and, and make sure that we're getting reimbursed through the ARP funds that are allotted to Laporte County.
Did we have, do we have any quotes on that? I don't recall if, I may have missed them, but I don't recall seeing any quotes. I know during the workshop, I had asked...
Mr. Sander is here, if you'd like to have him come up.
Sure. I think during the workshop, we, we advised that he would work under our direction, so you don't have an estimate on what we're doing, because we don't know what we're doing yet.
No, not on the total, but at least as far as hourly costs, or whatever they in line with the other, the other groups that are in contention. I, I know you've done great work for the county in the past, I just want to make sure we're dotting our i's.
I think our proposal we have, we'll be charging on an hourly basis, what we normally do, and I know the full engagement, we said, would not exceed $35,000, but if you're just initially wanting us just to do the revenue loss, it's not going to come anywhere near close to that, so, you know, I'd say $5,000, $6,000 to get us going, and then we can always come back, however you feel comfortable.
All right, great. My main question was if it was, basically you answered with, it's the same rates that you have been charging the rest.
Correct.
Okay, very good. And I would second that motion.
Yeah, I would point out, I've been, this is my 15th year in county government, and Carl was here when I got here. He knows every department, he knows our county inside and out, and I've come to trust him. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, you, be it the council has their funding, their finance committee, is that?
The 28th, I believe.
I believe it is.
I will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or consider withdrawing request for June council meeting for $20,000 part-time contracted officer for HR and resubmitting the county council for a full-time EEO compliance officer, recruiter, investigator in HR with job description and proposed salary for July council meeting. We had a workshop on that earlier. Mrs. Mossman, if you'd like to.
Good evening, Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. I am currently in the process of seeking approval for additional assistance in the Human Resources Department. We previously had gone before council requesting $20,000 for a contracted position. We'd like to take that off the table and go back to council for a full-time position. I'll be putting together a job description and taking that before the job evaluation committee to, for them to determine the appropriate salary for that position, and I'd just like your permission to approach council.
I would entertain a motion. I think we all know what the...
I would move to support Ms. Mossman's request and allow her to go to the council for funding for a full-time position. I think of note for the citizens is that we have 800 employees, 650 full-time, and the rest are seasonal or part-time employees, and we have two individuals who are trying to manage that workload. How they do it is beyond me, but I, I think if you compare our county to other counties and organizations our size, they generally have a much fuller... and organizations our size, they generally have a much fuller complement of employees who are managing HR, which includes benefit, payroll, onboarding, hiring, recruiting, training, the list goes on and on. So I support Barb's request.
I have a motion, do you have a second?
If acceptable, I'd like to amend your motion slightly for a full-time position that would cover HR-related duties, EEO outreach, diversity, inclusion, compliance, community outreach, but not for investigatory work. I think, I think, I do think that the HR department needs, needs another person to help with the tremendous workload that they have. They're definitely understaffed, and they need another full-time employee. I do think that for our EEO compliance and whistleblower protection, that's going to need a separate position for that, either contract or other, some other way that needs to be handled in a separate venue, in a separate sense.
So you're going to second the motion, except you don't want the position to include investigation?
Correct. Yeah, correct.
I think that's one of the most important things we need right now. In fact, your own statements in the workshop pointed that out, that there was a lack of investigation.
Absolutely. And as part of what I fought for, for whistleblower protection, which would also include some of the other harassment complaints, is that we need, we need someone specifically tasked on this. And I won't get into everything from the executive session, obviously, but we really need a specific person for that, that's going to be tasked for that, that isn't necessarily going to report directly to the head of HR. There needs to be significantly more, better safeguards and guardrails in place to make sure that position is able to operate appropriately and effectively to provide the true protection that our workers need and the security that they feel so they can report and deal with these issues in a timely fashion without feeling, quite frankly, the way things have been for the past couple of years.
So you're suggesting, then, that we hire someone with EEO and also a second person just for investigation?
The, perhaps my language was slightly, so HR needs, needs, needs someone to help with their daily duties. They, they need help with onboarding, they need help with their regular HR duties, as well as to do some community outreach to increase minority participation in the county. Our numbers are below our county population levels. Having that outreach as someone who can go out into the community and help do that outreach, bring in more minorities into our, into our ranks would be a good thing. I think that is going to take up a full 40-hour work week between everything else that needs to be done with onboarding and whatnot, and trying to also throw on investigatory duties on top of that is just, is just something that, at first, I think it's going to be very difficult to find someone who has all of those qualifications, and then on top of it, investigatory abilities as well. We really want, and I, it's been my desire from the beginning to have the investigatory person who's going to pursue whistleblower complaints, EEO complaints, harassment complaints, to be an independent individual, or board, for that matter, either one would satisfy me, to make sure that the, that our workers and, and people in our community can feel safe and secure in going and making sure these are going to get handled in not just a timely fashion, but in appropriate fashion all the way around. And, and that's why I don't, I just don't think it's possible for one person that, first of all, for one person to do all of these things that we talked about earlier in the executive session. And, and second, I still don't think it's appropriate for that person to be subordinate then to the HR director. I just, I just don't think, given what we've seen, some of the things that we discussed earlier, I just don't think that's an appropriate way to move forward with that. I do think HR definitely needs another, another person, another full-time position. But to, to wrap all that into one, I just don't think is appropriate. I don't think, I don't think we'll find someone with those qualifications, with all those qualifications, let alone satisfy the function of actually providing some, some true safety and security for our employees.
I'll read the motion again. Consider withdrawing request for June council meeting for $20,000 part-time contracted officer for HR and resubmitting to county council for a full-time EEO compliance officer, recruiter, investigator in HR with job description and proposed salary for July council meeting. That is the proposed request, and that's what we're voting on. We have a motion to accept.
I had a motion to modify.
You know, what you can do is then vote on the motion to amend first, and then the underlying motions.
We'll have to have a second on your amendment.
That's right.
Do we have a second on Joe's amendment? Dyes for lack of second. I will second your motion, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. New business. Consider ordinance to vacate undeveloped roadway on East Belmont Drive in New Carlyle. Andrew Volz, attorney, I think I see his name on Zoom. Oh, I see his red hair.
Good afternoon, President, Mr. President. Or good evening, I guess, at this point. Yes, I'm here representing Marianne Ritchie as the petitioner who filed the petition to vacate an undeveloped but plotted roadway adjacent to and in between her properties located in Hudson Township, County of Lepore, State of Indiana. Her actual address is 8579 East Belmont Drive, New Carlyle, Indiana 46552. And then she also owns an adjacent lot that does not have an actual address because it abuts up to the actual lake. As you see in the proposed ordinance that was submitted, there is a map that's attached as Exhibit A, which shows outlined in red the area that she is seeking to vacate to then ostensibly join these two parcels together. We would just ask that this petition be approved by the commissioners on first reading. Thank you.
Joe, you said on the plan commission, was this received?
It was well received, and there were no, I don't believe there were any remonstrators.
No remonstrators?
If I may make the record clear, there were no remonstrators, but I do not believe it was a unanimous vote.
No, I think there was one vote against, if I remember correctly, there was one vote against. Otherwise, yeah, there was no remonstrators.
Since this is an ordinance, it's been our policy to ask if there's anyone from the public who wanted to weigh in. It was already approved by the plan commission. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consider ordinance to vacate undeveloped roadway on East Saginaw Trail and East Miami Trail in Rolling Prairie, Andrew Volz, which is really Saginaw Lake, but go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, my name is Andrew Volz. I'm an attorney representing Stanley R. and Jane E. Courts as the trustees of the Courts Trust dated 2/13/2001, that have filed their petition to vacate the undeveloped but plotted roadways adjacent to and in between their properties located in Galena Township, County of Lepore, State of Indiana. Again, these are two properties that do not have physical addresses at this point, or excuse me, they do have physical addresses, but then the portion that is to be vacated that is shown in the attached Exhibit A does not have an actual address. And they're seeking to vacate that plotted but undeveloped roadway in between those two parcels that does not have a name with regards to a road. And then, and so you've got Saginaw Trail on the top, Miami Trail on the bottom, and it's that piece of property that runs in between there that is a plotted but undeveloped roadway with no actual name assigned to it. We would ask that, again, in that this petition was unanimously approved by the plan commission with the recommendation to approve, that this ordinance or proposed ordinance that has been submitted would be approved by, by the Lepore County Commissioners.
Were there any remonstrators against this?
There were not, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you. Since this is an ordinance, I would ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Consider service agreement with UMR, Barb Mossman, HR. UMR, HR, cool.
Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. In front of you is the administrative service agreement with our health provider, UMR. This is just an update to show the amendments that we've made through the past year to our service agreement with them, that some include teledoc, telehealth, and then the obesity and diabetes prevention services. And they're just needing to get an updated service agreement on file.
We've used these for a while.
Yes.
I thought so. That sounds familiar. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And stay right there, the Barb Mossman Show. Consider agreement with dependent eligibility audit, Barb Mossman, HR.
At our last quarterly insurance meeting, it was decided upon to do a dependent eligibility audit on our health insurance. We've not had an audit completed for quite some time on the dependent status to ensure that dependents should be on the plan. This is outside the scope of just an age requirement where dependent children are allowed to stay on the plan until age 26. This will encompass also any spouses that may not be eligible on the plan anymore, possibly due to divorce, that we've not been made aware of. So at this time, by doing this audit, will help us reduce the risk associated with these claims, plus, if I didn't say that, the risk, and also being complaints with the law, so.
Got it.
Move to support.
Do you have any questions for Barb? If not, I would entertain a motion.
No, so moved. This was important, something that we discussed during that last meeting. One of the things, not just for regular claims paying out, but we have a stop-loss plan, so then in case, you know, something traumatic happens, our secondary kind of insurance would kick in that would limit the county's liability if there's, you know, massive claim that's presented. And if, if that, that system that we have is dependent upon the people on the plan being eligible. So if someone had one of these massive things and they weren't eligible, the county would theoretically be on the hook for that total, could be on the hook for that total amount, and the stop-loss wouldn't pay out. So that's why this is pretty important to do, if that makes sense.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
And second.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Barb. Do you have any more on here, or is that it? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, consider formally notifying City of Michigan City of cessation of Willard Avenue Carpentry Program for the court slash notice to end lease at location.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission, as you saw, we were contacted by Judge Stahlbrink, indicated that the county's probation is no longer using the carpentry program over there. There has been a rent paid ongoing with the City of Michigan City, and so it was Judge Stahlbrink's recommendation that the, consider, that the commission formally notify the city that we're no longer in need of that particular rental property since the project, the program is no longer undergoing.
Got it. I entertain a motion.
I move to support that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consider appointment of MS4 Board. You serve as Chair of Multi-Jurisdictional MS4 Co-op. We've had some discussion on this. I believe we had a candidate that we've, please kicked around.
Yes, thank you again for having me up here. Basically, the MS4 is made up of four entities, Trail Creek, Long Beach, the city, and the county. And each of those entities have a representative that sits on our board, and our board votes and makes various decisions and stuff. We were saddened, but Mr. Poland moved on to become the building commissioner, so we have an opening. And I had talked to Mr. Sullivan, the county engineer, and the board has also approved me being able to come in to here to see if you guys would approve him as taking Mike's past position. Why? Well, he's already an engineer. He already knows slip plans, stormwater pollution prevention plans. He knows the same people that I know down at IDAM, and we quite often work together on certain issues anyway. There are certain projects that MS4 is not allowed to review. Mr. Friedman is well aware of that when it comes to county projects. However, with the relationship and knowing the people down at IDAM, we can put it on a stick and send it out to IDAM when we go through the SWCD, there's proper procedures. But this gentleman is an excellent choice to fill the position, and he's very experienced. So I'm asking that we fill Mike's position with Jerry Sullivan, the county engineer.
To be clear, that's the board position, that's not a full-time job.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Let me clear that up.
That's correct. So I, I would move to appoint Jerry Sullivan to the MS4, to serve on the MS4 Board and Co-op there, not, not specifically as chair, because the board itself appoints chairs, and the board this, for this year has already appointed, if I remember correctly, Jerry Jackson from the city. So they already have a sitting chair.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up.
Sure.
Aware of that. We have a motion?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Consider request by election board to purchase mobile van accessible by wheelchair users for mobile voter registration and early voting with grant funds secured by Center for Tech and Service Life, Clerk Heather Stevens, Chuck Waterson, and Nelson Picardo, who's standing in front of me.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you guys doing?
Good things.
Wonderful. Living the dream.
I have a few documents that I'd like to share with you. May I approach?
Certainly.
So, Mr. President, I'm here on behalf of the election board. I, my counterpart, Mr. Waterson, was hoping to be here, but he wasn't, unable to make it. And the Clerk Heather Stevens also wished he could be here, but also wasn't able to make it. The election board has, has an exciting project. I'm sure you all have heard about it. It's the, the mobile voting unit that we're hoping to use as a, as a voting booth and also as a registration for, for future elections. We have the, the grant from the Center of Tech and Civic Life that, I'm very proud of this. Our firm was able to secure that grant, and we are very excited to be able to share that with the community, be able to use this, hopefully, these funds to, to get this, this mobile unit so that the citizens of Lepore County can, can register easier and also vote easier as well. So I'm just looking for approval to use the funds that we have from the, from the grant from Center of Tech and Civic Life in order to purchase that vehicle. I have presented you the, the vendor, it's MTE. We have been in contact with them. They have quite a few different options, and this, this particular van is, is the van that the election board has, has chosen to use. It's, it's not a new vehicle. It's used, so the, the cost is a little bit down, and we believe it's going to be exactly what we need in order to be able to, to make this succeed. One thing I will point out, on the second page, I believe, of your packet, I'm sorry, the, is the, the last page, under the proposal, it does not have a section under pricing for the wrap that goes around, around it. It's going to have, we haven't chosen the details yet, but we're hoping to do something like the, the seal that's behind you, the Lepore County, Indiana seal, wrapped around, so it's, so it's very noticeable, very easy to spot. We're wanting to put some lights on there as well, just to, to draw attention to it. So that's not in the pricing yet. We're still hammering out some of those details, but the, the quote there for the final price of $47,300, that's the base price for the unit. And the, the grant, I don't know if you all know, the grant that we have is for $67,000. So it's well under, under the grant that we have. There are some additional add-ons that we would like to see that'll bring the cost up, but it's going to be under $67,000.
Sure.
And I also will point out that if we're not able to use all of that money, we have to return it back to the Center of Civic Life. So we want to make sure that we're able to, to make this thing look great, be user-friendly, serve the community for years to come. So on behalf of the election board, I'm asking that you all approve this so that we can get moving and hopefully get it up and running before the next election cycle.
Mr. Picardo, since we're coming up very quickly on, on that deadline to spend the funds, would it, would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve for the purchase of the van and any additional needed equipment up to $67,000?
Yes, Commissioner Haney, that would be an excellent idea.
All right. That case, so moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Yeah, with that 6.8-liter V10, you might want to get a grass card.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
So I was wondering, would the traveling board use this, or would that still be separate?
It's my understanding that that would still be separate. This is, this wouldn't be used in that aspect. We haven't discussed that yet. It's something that we could bring up. But from, from my experience with the travel board, they usually use their own vehicles for that, and that's, because there's multiple travel boards sometimes.
Right. I just wondered.
So, but it could, it could be, it could be a vehicle that's used on, as, as an SS.
Thinking, you know, you've got all the stuff and the people.
Absolutely.
Great idea to also bring it to our high schools so that we can register our, our new 18-year-old voters.
Yes, absolutely.
Potential voters. Potential voters.
Just so the, any viewers are aware or watching, we plan on using it at fairs, you know, anywhere there's food trucks, you know. We want it to be very visible everywhere around the community, you know, South County, Michigan City, everywhere. That's the whole purpose of this. And I'm very proud that the election board has decided to move in this direction. I think it's going to be very beneficial for everyone.
Cool. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your hard work, Mr. Ricardo, and to the rest of your board. It's fantastic work.
Moving on, consider requesting from council $750,000 from ARP funds to establish LaPorte County Emergency Rental Assistance Program to prevent evictions due to moratorium expiring June 30. Fund to be administered by Judge Thorne and Friedman, and input consultation from township trustee, clerk, sheriff, and nonprofit organizations. I could get everybody involved in that. I know when I first heard about this, I had to think about it a while. I read it again, and when I saw that we were going to have the little, all the people involved here, nonprofit organizations, the sheriff, the clerk, the trustees, Judge Thorne, who's known for many, many years, and Judge Friedman, who her work with the Problem Solving Court is outstanding, people that I know and trust, I thought more differently other than, everybody knows what's at stake here.
Mr. President, if you would give me the liberty of sharing parts of the email that I sent to a group of colleagues, some of them that you just mentioned, because it will frame the conversation for our community who may be listening. You know, I've had some really vibrant conversations with people. And once you explain the facts of the matter, it seems like people really understand the impact that could, if we don't act, the impact that it could have on our community. So after reading the, an online report titled "National Eviction Moratorium Expiring: Indiana Agencies Prepare for Spike," about the flood of evictions expected when the eviction moratorium expires on June 30, we were struck by the fact that many of our families with small children, many elderly folks and others who struggle mightily to keep their lives moving in the right direction, could be evicted and potentially homeless if we do not act and act quickly. In talking to Lisa at the center township, she tells me that this problem is already happening in real time. So how can we act innovatively as leaders to protect the most vulnerable and do it fairly and equitably? So I talked to the county attorney to ask if it's possible to set up our own LaPorte County Emergency Rental Assistance Fund from ARP dollars in order to reduce the number of those evictions for LaPorte County citizens. Our focus could be those who have tried to keep up with their rental obligations, but because of various reasons such as illness, job loss, being homebound with children during the time when the schools were shut, and the recession, have fallen behind on their rent and our risk of evictions beginning June 30. This rental assistance could also help to support the many landlords across our community who have suffered lost revenue on their rental units during this crisis period. The attorney called me back and provided the attached reference from the June 8 U.S. Treasury guidance that makes clear that it is perfectly acceptable use of ARP dollars and appears to be one of the prime purposes behind the passage of the American Rescue Plan to respond to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic. So we are proposing for your consideration and support the funding and establishment of a $750,000 LaPorte County Emergency Rental Assistance Fund from ARP dollars to be administered by two judges in our county who hear eviction cases. Judge Thorne, whom Mr., Commissioner Mrazinski mentioned, Judge Thorne in Superior Court III, and Judge Friedman, Superior Court IV, with input from the relevant township trustees, the sheriff, the clerk, and the social service agencies dealing with homelessness and housing issues in our county. Clearly, we have both tenants and landlords who have been adversely affected by the pandemic and who can be helped by these funds as long as they are administered fairly and prudently by the courts. While there is some state funding also available for rental assistance, and we heard about that tonight from Ed Seal, it appears that these programs are really slow to respond and are overwhelmed with requests, while many tenants are on the verge of eviction with no quick relief in sight. We would need to be clear that there are guardrails on this program, so the tenants would need to have demonstrated good faith efforts to have kept up with their rent, using their stimulus checks and other income, but have simply fallen behind through no fault of their own during this crisis period. Then I attached some statistics from the eviction lab, which is following the number of evictions in five states, including Indiana. And they predict that an eviction crisis will occur once the moratorium ends in just a few days. So I'll end here and say that I trust that we want to act swiftly, equitably, and decisively to protect our most vulnerable citizens. So I just wanted to frame that because, you know, I, people, when there's this much money involved and there are people in crisis, I think that we want to make sure that we're basing our conversation on facts.
You mentioned something that most people don't think about. You know, I've heard people say, well, gee, maybe the landlord just let them slide for a while. Okay, the landlord's got a substantial investment in his building.
And they have to pay their mortgage.
He's got to pay his bills too, you know. It's a, I like the fact that this was tailored for Judge Thorne, who I have huge respect for with his administration of the Veterans Court, and also I have huge respect for Judge Friedman. Her work with the Veteran, the Problem Solving Court is amazing. I trust them both to administer this program. Unless we have any other comments, I would entertain a motion.
I see Judge Friedman is here, so maybe she wants to speak.
And we have Judge Thorne as well.
Yeah. Hi, Judge.
We'd rather talk to you.
Judge, Judge Thorne and I.
I don't know him.
Judge Thorne and I have had a chance to talk about this. And while we certainly believe that the cause is noble here and that what you're trying to do, I think everybody agrees this is something worthy of doing, we have to work within the constraints of the Code of Judicial Conduct. And so we've been talking about coming up with, looking at some alternative means of administering this so that judges aren't necessarily doing it. They, these cases would come to our courts. But let me give you an example. Back in 2008, when the mortgage foreclosure situation was just truly drastic, the state of Indiana created these settlement programs. Now, that was done through the state. But they were these mortgage foreclosure settlement programs. And what they did was hire a part-time lawyer to meet with both the banks and the folks in foreclosure to try to come up with settlement.
I think your mic is not turned on correctly. Is it turned on, or?
It's on.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so what happened there was hundreds of thousands of people across the state met with these mediators, if you will, and they came to settlement agreements, and it prevented mass, you know, evictions from people in foreclosure situations. So something similar to that might be a possibility to try to work with both landlords and tenants. And I think it's imperative, as you have all mentioned, to have the trustees, the clerks, the sheriff, because they all share in some fashion a piece of this puzzle. So I just wanted to let you know that. We have reached out to the State of Indiana, Indiana Judicial Office, to see what parameters there are, is anybody else doing a program like this, to see if we could kind of maybe work towards fashioning that. Another alternative that Judge Thorne and I talked about would be if we can't hire or coax a lawyer to volunteer to do this, that, or maybe even a senior judge to help with this, that maybe running this program through the trustee's office might be another alternative to making sure that these funds are used, because the trustees certainly know who needs it, and they certainly work very, very closely hand in glove with landlords. So that's, that's kind of what Judge Thorne and I have talked about. Judge, anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, they, and I certainly appreciate the kind words from everybody. But you have to remember that when, when we hear a case in court, we've got a party on either side. And if there's a dispute, we apply the law as we see it, to the facts as we find them, and order one party or another to pay the other typically. What you're talking about is administering taxpayer funds. And that's a different function than what we normally do. And for us to do that, first of all, we need to get confirmation from the state that it doesn't violate the Code of Judicial Conduct to do that. And secondly, there need to be, there need to be developed some pretty specific guidelines that tell, whether it's the trustee or a judge, or a facilitator, what's the criteria there to use? Because this is taxpayer money. This isn't money between the parties in the lawsuit. This is outside money. And so whoever's administering this is going to want some pretty distinct guidelines that tell them. Because when they've got a landlord and a tenant sitting at their desk, their points of view are much different. And the mediator, the facilitator, needs to know what the guideline, and we can't just simply say, you know, you show good judgment, you decide. That's fine if we're deciding disputes between parties, but it's a whole different animal to be administering public money that way. And so Judge Friedman and I have talked about it quite a bit. And I'm more than happy to participate in a program. I'm more than happy to try to help develop these guidelines and so forth. And I'm more than happy to have, so let's say there's a facilitator, and they meet with the parties, they come to an agreement in a case that's already been filed. I am more than happy to take either the agreement they've come to and approve of it and give it some force. Or if they can't come to an agreement, I would be more than one to consider the facilitator's recommendation based upon his or her direct involvement with the parties and the circumstances. So I'm totally supportive of the program. I know Judge Friedman is as well. As they say, the devil's in the details. But we can't lose sight of the fact that you folks are elected to administer public funds, or at least in count, along with the council. And, you know, so you're elected to do that. Judges aren't elected to do that. And so I want to be cautious on how we do it, but I'm 100% in support and happy to help however I can. And we may find out from the state of Indiana that there's more flexibility that we have than we're concerned we have. That would be my nickel's worth.
And certainly Judge Thorne and I have talked about some checklists and some things that would need to go into making these decisions. And maybe, depending on what you all do tonight, trying to organize a meeting of the parties, including yourself and counsel, would be appropriate so that we can try to figure out where to go from here. Because, as you said, Commissioner, we're coming up on a deadline pretty soon.
Well, I want to point out that we're requesting permission in this motion to take this to the council.
Right.
So they will have to have their final decision. You got seven people there to convince. All you're asking from us is can you go to the council and present it to them?
Well, I'm not asking to present it.
I think it's Commissioner Mathias. What you may do and might overcome the, or deal with the judges' concerns, if there's a motion to approach the council, to then set up a facilitation or some program similar to what happened with the mortgage foreclosure program, so that the facilitator is then making recommendations to the respective judges. And you may want to simply remove the term "to be administered by the judges." I think that will hopefully overcome their concerns, but keep this process moving. Because I know Commissioner Mathias, when she proposed this, expressed the urgency with this moratorium ending June 30.
And I think, you know, Ed, I'm not going to speak for you because you're here to speak for yourself, but Ed made a really good point about there are agencies like United Way, for example, and the trustees, this is what they do, and they're good at it. You know, the idea of having judges who do evictions as sort of oversight seemed to me to satisfy the concerns that some folks would have about, you know, we're giving, just giving dollar bills away to lots of people. And, you know, that's, it is taxpayer dollars, and we do have a fiscal responsibility. So that was kind of the thinking behind it. But how it actually rolls out and, you know, it needs to get into the hands of the trustees and of the agencies that do this on a regular basis, I would say that's.
Agreed.
I think it's going to help too, the whole situation that the governor has ruled that after this week, after this weekend, you're not going to get paid to stay home anymore.
Yeah.
Cut that out. That's going to help a lot. People are going to get back to where, I sympathize with people that are trying to raise a family, and all of a sudden, due to COVID, you don't have a job. And you see it all over town. There's a lot of places now that are hiring. I think we're going to get back on an even keel. But in the meantime, there's going to be people that, it's going to come down to that. You're going to be like a last chance deal here to keep somebody from going to a homeless shelter or living on the street. We have enough of that as it is. So I appreciate Judge Friedman and Judge Thorne both, we're stepping up here.
While our judges are here, I do have a quick question here in regards to what you see as far as evictions coming up. One of the things I've had numerous, and thank you for pointing out some of the possible conflict interests as far as the judges administering this. I did some quick Google Foo over the weekend, because this was added on the schedule on Friday, trying to look. And it slips my mind right now, if it was New Jersey or New York, where something similar attempted, and it was shot down for some of the reasons you mentioned. So I would assume Indiana, the Supreme Court in Indiana, or the governing ethics board would feel the same way. So you've got some precedents there. I can't remember if it was New York or New Jersey. Now off the top of my head. My question is in relation to, you know, speaking with numerous trustees, including Ms. Pierceakowski. It seems like it takes, you know, several weeks to a month or so for most of these programs to go forward. I know people call my office, and they'll ask questions normally I'll forward them to a trustee. Or I'll also send them, you know, the Indiana Emergency Relief, IERA, the HHF, Indiana's Hardest Hit Fund, which also deals more with mortgages. And for anybody who's listening, who's curious about those things, most of that can all be found under the tab of ihcdain.gov for these various things. But one of the biggest problems, whether, you know, looking for mortgage assistance, rental assistance, power bill assistance, for example, folks don't get ahead of the curve. So what will happen is, and I see it a lot in trustees' offices, is that rather than someone coming, you know, when they realize they can't pay their next electric bill, and the next one's going to be a shut-off, they wait until literally the day the power is cut off, and they have no power in their home, as opposed to going sooner and filing and trying to stay ahead of the curve. So I guess my question is, how often, when you see, you know, as we're going to see these evictions coming up, how often are you seeing it's a case of the individuals not filing, you know, either in a timely fashion, or is it something where, you know, they would file, and then it's, you know, two, three, four, five months, and they still haven't heard something back? Because what I'm hearing, at least in my office, is that most of these things, like the Hardest Hit Fund, for example, their response time is about three to four weeks. And then, you know, obviously, they've worked with the mortgage lender, and then they file their stuff. They let them know they're happening, and then it continues the process. They pay it back. So I'm curious as to what either of, there are two judges here are seeing in their courts in relation to that.
Well, I can't really generalize, but I would say we see both.
Okay. All right. Because I know there's a tremendous amount of money out there right now. The state just got another infusion of, I want to say it's well over $100 million. Their funds for these never ran out, but I know they got another injection with the ARC funds that came in, and there was an allocation to them. So with the various, between IERA, HHF, these others, aside from some of the federal stuff with HUD.gov and stuff, I'm just curious as to how much duplication we're going to be having, as well as what the trustees already have going, how much duplication we're going to see with this 750, as well as kind of, I guess, where the 750 number came from. If there's any evidence or paperwork or anything we can see that would give us this 750 tab here, how that was.
Well, if I might, Commissioner, in response to your question directed to the judges, there's a certain degree of tenants who simply aren't aware of what's available. Now, I know in my court, and I'm pretty sure in Judge Friedman's court, when the eviction is filed, when they get the notice of claim, they also get a ream of paperwork advising them, among other things, of the state aid that's available, and the CDC affidavits and so forth. So, excuse me. So, excuse me. The information is put out there, what people do with it, if they understand it, and, and I can't explain it to them. I can't be their advocate, but I can certainly make sure that they get the information and, and we do that. So some folks are just very slow on the, on the trigger and they, they're thirsty, but boy, you've got to lead them to water and put their nose in it. And so I, I was just sitting here thinking how this, how this program could work and if, I think the way we could deal with the delay is when, when a case is filed for eviction, we, it can then be referred to the agency or the facilitator or whomever is going to be, be doing that. So that, so that they, they know, okay, on, on day one, we came into court, on, on day two, we're supposed to go to this facility. Now, if we don't bother going and we don't participate, then there may be some negative consequences for us. And then on day three, we're going to be back in court and the judge is either going to approve an agreement we came to or, or look at a recommendation. But, you know, that way people know landlords aren't going to feel like this is just another delaying process of another month or two that I'm not getting any rent for. And tenants will feel like they're being given an opportunity. And I, I, that would help us facilitate it because we have control of the case. I'm not sure we should have control of the money, but we have control of the case.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. It sounds like really education is a major part of this. What, what my concern here has been as I've looked through this and tried and sort through this over the weekend, at first blush, it seems really well intentioned and, and a good thing. My concern is that we're duplicating services. So, you know, taxpayers, not just in La Porte County, but across the nation, the funds were pooled from them or borrowed on the backs of their great, great, great grandchildren and put into these state programs for, for La Porte County to be allocating a separate pot of funds from the taxpayers of La Porte County when there's already funds available that have been appropriated at the state level. I'm not sure if at this point that makes sense. If they can get the money from the state that's already there, that taxpayers have already contributed to, why are we getting another set of funds on top of that, which would do an identical thing? I just, I, I think we're, I get the intention and perhaps maybe some sort of, something at the county as far as maybe a resource person or resource group or helping to get some resources into the hands of the trustees and stuff to make sure that folks who are facing these positions can go to the, and get, almost have their hand held, for lack of a better term, to get to these state programs, make sure they file these things in a timely fashion so that they can get that money that's already there from the state. I think, I, I think for myself, I would be looking at this different if this, this money in these programs for both renters, mortgages and landlords didn't already exist and wasn't already flush with money right now from a second infusion. So that's where my concern is here is that we're not only duplicating things, but we're taking money from La Porte County taxpayers on top of what the taxpayers have already kicked in for the state.
So I, I guess my counterpoint to that would be that the, the folks who are the public service, they manage, working these programs with people, are telling me that those programs are extremely slow to respond. They are, they are months out trying to, they're overwhelmed with applications, requests from families. And if your rent is due on July 1st and the moratorium ends on June 30th and you've got three little children, what are you supposed to do? Fill out a bunch of paperwork and hope that the state brings you money in the next, by the time your rent is due on the 15th? So, you know, Ed, I'm going to ask you again, if you could just give us a boots on the ground, what, what ideas do you and the home team have that may be helpful here? And, you know, while the program, Mr. Haney calls it well intentioned, I, what we're trying to do is meet the needs of real families, real, real people, real elders, real veterans who need our support and this money may be the answer. You know, if you don't think it's the answer, that's fine. We can come up with something else.
Well, again, you know, I came to speak on behalf of the home team of La Porte County in support of this money being used for rental assistance because we do see a dire need for this. There is money available, but it's not moving fast enough. And local organizations are already trying to supplement the state funding that has been happening. But, you know, United Way saw that it wasn't happening fast enough and that there was a, a need to move a little quicker on a local level. And so they created the homeless prevention program and had long discussion within the home team and the rental assistance committee on who would implement those funds. And it was decided to go with the township trustees because they had the appropriate systems in place to vet people and to know that the money was going to the right people and to match the township tax dollars that were already allocated. It's a matching fund. So we do see a need and I think that it's really important to move forward with this and to move quickly because we're going to see a lot of people on July 1st that are facing eviction.
So since you deal with a lot of these programs, I, I assume you helped get them in contact with various state, state programs as well. Usually so for like the IERA, for example, if, if someone applies and they need more rental assistance, I'm sorry, mortgage would be under HHF. But if they need rental assistance, for example, they file and let's say it takes, you know, four to six weeks to get approved. Normally that rental assistance, when it comes back, and correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't just start from the moment that they're approved, but it goes back and covers usually the month at least when they applied. So let's say, for example, in the case of an eviction, for example, normally it takes a couple of months usually to work its way, at least several, many weeks to work its way through the court system. It's filed, you get in the pipeline, you get in the process. You know, in the middle of that eviction process, while it's going through the courts, generally speaking, I, I'm not aware of any, at least I haven't seen any definitive information where these state programs take more than, take more than two months to, to pay out. They would go from the time that it was there through and usually carry out at least at, you know, at least three to six more months on the thing. So you're looking at not just, you know, so let's, let's say you missed the July 1st payment, you went in the eviction process for whatever reason, rather than, than the person being evicted filing when they knew they weren't going to make it, but they just waited until the eviction happened or right up until that day, you would still be within that two-month window from the state. When the state paid out, they would cover from where it happened moving forward. So even though it didn't get approved, let's say until August 1st, they would still be paying that July 1st mortgage payment that was missed in addition to the August 1st. So I, I've spent some different time going through this over the weekend, trying to look and really not just the broader thing that I have from the people who've reached out to the office, because we've got a ton of calls, especially back in February and April, February, March, April, about this as, you know, the eviction process was coming up and people getting nervous and scared and trying to point people in the right direction. That, that's where my, that's where my concern there comes from. If, if there is going to be some sort of thing, if there's, I, if the funds are there from the state and they would get paid out and, and when they pay, I hate to use the term necessary, retroactively, but it's back to when they had filed, you're, you're, you're looking at covering that. I'm, I'm still failing to see right now, while there's still funds there and while they're still paying out, where, where we should be allocating the La Porte County taxpayer dollars to that when that money's already there at the state and would cover from back where they are.
Can I just elaborate just a little bit on that to, to give you some timeframe? I had someone in my court Monday and they had applied for the emergency relief assistance fund. They had applied in April. They, they've gotten letters saying you were applied and the last line says you need do nothing further. They've gotten the money. So Judge Thorne and I both have spoken to trustee Pierce Akowski about some concerns that if she pays this and then they later are reimbursed by the state, you know, there's, there's this, this windfall, if you will. So Judge Thorne and I have agreed that on our orders, we are going to indicate if you have already received payment from whatever the source is and the trustee, you must reimburse the trustee. So, you know, we're trying to keep aware, because I see exactly what you're saying, and we're trying, trying to be aware of where these funds are coming in because, you know, we don't want, we don't want windfalls and on the other hand, we don't want people.
I didn't want to use that term, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So Mr. Haney, I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't remind all of us what we're talking about here. You have consistently said our taxpayer dollars, they are our taxpayer dollars. They came from the federal government, American Rescue Plans, the heavy on the word rescue. This is money that is returning to every community in this country, every small town, every city, every big city, to help alleviate the impact and relieve, provide relief to communities that are having economic struggles. These are our families that are struggling. And when you, when you apply, you know, I worked, I ran a welfare office at one time in my career, and one of the most instructive things about it were that people who have barriers have not just one barrier, they have two barriers and three barriers and four barriers. They aren't a college educated person who knows how to run a computer, fill out forms, get them notarized. It's, it's, there's barriers to those, to many of the people we're, we're talking about. And so to put another barrier up and say, you know, fill out all these forms, wait three months and they'll send you a letter saying, do nothing, it's in process, it'll come, while you're worrying about food on your table and your children having a bed to sleep in. I think just from a, a community perspective, this money was sent back to our county from the federal government for relief and to rescue the community that has had a once-in-a-lifetime, once-in-a-hundred-years pandemic and the impact, we're going to feel that impact for not just this year, but next year. And it'll take us probably a good three to five years for families to recover. They've lost all their savings, they've had to spend their nest egg. We're trying to make sure that we are providing some sort of thoughtful and equitable solution so that they can get the relief. I, I really appreciate Judge Thorne and Judge Friedman talking about how to prevent that windfall thing because, you know, that's not fair. And we, we want to make sure that we're equitable, we're making sure that we're taking care of the people who need it the most, not the people who got their stimulus check and went to, you know, on vacation to Disneyland. I mean, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people who are living on the margin, who are working people, working minimum wage jobs and are still having trouble getting back on, on their feet and providing them some sort of community relief, which is exactly what this money was sent back to communities across the country to provide relief and to provide rescue. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. I, I was curious when I asked earlier, where did the $750,000 amount come from?
You could change the amount if you'd prefer.
Just curious. Okay.
So back to the original motion, which was we are requesting from the counsel, we're not spending the dime, we're requesting the money from the counsel to go to this cause. I would entertain a motion to consider requesting this amount from the counsel.
Mr. President, if I could amend, based on what our attorney recommended, that the funds, we remove the words administered by Judge Thorne and Judge Friedman and perhaps say something like oversight by the judges or something like that, that would, would change it. So we know that people who are pillars of our community are providing some oversight and this is an area that they have expertise. None of us here have expertise in evictions and the, and the law around that. But also emphasizing that we are talking about consultation with nonprofits like United Way and the, the home team and the township trustees, those folks who have the expertise to develop a system that will make sure that we are being inclusive and we're being equitable in, in any distribution of these American Rescue Plan funds.
When this comes before the counsel, I would assume that Judge Friedman and Judge Thorne would be there, or at least on Zoom, perhaps a commissioner?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it is.
I, I would think the counsel would want to see something more fleshed out.
That's the counsel.
Than, than what we see here before they would approve something.
Would one of you commissioners or both entertain to be at their meeting to explain your, your concerns? It's my wife's birthday, I won't be there. Just tell her ahead of time.
Smart husband.
Yeah. But I would entertain a motion then to at least approach the counsel with this concept.
Support. Or so moved, I should say, so moved.
Without having something more definitive and fleshed out to send to them, I don't think it would be appropriate to send something to them that's so open-ended.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Last but not least, consider requesting funding from LIT or CEDIT, major moves or major bridge for counsel, from the counsel for repairs through the Franklin Street Bridge, not to exceed 1.5 million. I've talked about this at length for months on end. Last year, when the bridge was inspected, they found damage that said, if you do not fix this, you cannot open the bridge. We spent a half a million dollars to fix that. In doing so, our experts, Marquis and USI, have identified parts, the control system and the drive system, that I've explained that, that this is something that needs to be rebuilt. This is something that you can't just go out and fix it, you have to order parts to be specially made. You're looking at, at least four months out. They need to know now, that they need confirmation to order these parts, four months out at least. When the bridge closes on December 1st, they will jack it open, will close the street and they will commence to installing these parts and fixing it. They're looking at a minimum of three months there. It's a big deal. Million and a half bucks. In the meantime, if these parts break, the, the bridge will still be jacked open and the street will still be closed to traffic going to the beach and to the, to the festivals and especially if it happens to be when they have the offshore boat race. And that bridge will be closed until they order the parts, four months at least, until they install them, another three months at least. And the million and a half, that will probably triple. So it's, I, I can't express enough, I've talked with Marquis, I've talked with USI at length about this project, including just up until yesterday. They need some confirmation from somebody. We've talked about it for months. They need confirmation to go ahead and order the parts so that we can do this. The fear of it breaking down, I've even talked with CVB, said, look, you know, this thing breaks, what are we going to do? We're going to sit there and, and we're going to pay for it. What are you guys going to do? What are you going to do about your festivals? What are you going to do about your boat race? What are you going to do? You know, as a former mayor of Michigan City, how important that bridge is to Michigan City. I'd like to just give it to them, but they won't take it. They don't do bridges, remember?
They've tried that before.
So I'm trying to get somebody off the dime here. That's why I put this on the agenda, to take it to them and tell them, the ball is in your court, boys and girls. Either you fund it and we fix it, or when it, if and when it breaks, you know, we've talked about this before, when does the bridge break? Whenever Dan wants it, well, wants it. So.
Mr. President, I have a, I have a quick question here. So we, we talked in our workshop about the million dollar a year for five-year plan for a total of $5 million, which everybody seemed to be pretty much on board with that plans going forward. The 1.5 million that I'm seeing here, is the 1 million, is 1 million of that for the first 1 million thing and then the half million for the other parts?
This is for the control system and for the drive system to replace it. And the other plan, that was the original idea. But when they discovered the condition that this drive system and control system is in, they said, hold up. We can't do this over five years. This is something that has to be done one shot. And by doing so, it's going to relieve a whole lot of tension on the bridge for other issues. They said, if it's brakes or if it's this or if it's that, that's something that if it breaks, they can go down and fix it. This is something though, that's bigger, this would be like, yeah, we're going to, we're going to do something to your car every year and then you find out, if I don't replace the engine and transmission, it doesn't matter what you're going to do from one year to the next because it's not going to work. This is a pretty big deal. And they were pretty alarmed when they saw, when they made the call, I could tell the tension in their voice that they're letting us know, here's the deal, here's what has to be done and here's the cost and here's what happens if you don't fix it. And the, the clock is ticking. When I talked to the, the expert, the engineers yesterday, USI, they said, if this is approved by the counsel in two weeks, we hope that we have enough time to order these parts and get them before December because everything is backed up, no matter what, everything is backed up. Hopefully they can get the parts in four months, but there's no guarantee. So it's, it's critical. So yeah, the, the million dollar a year for five years, that was something that came up last year, they talked about. This is a, this, a discovery that's got everybody pretty shocked.
Yeah. Mr. President, I move that we send this to the counsel, requesting funds from any and all of the funding streams that we have to access to meet that 1.5 million needed to provide emergency repairs for Franklin Street Bridge in the next off-season.
I like the way you phrase that as opposed to how it was written here, and I would wholeheartedly second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
For the record, commissioners, it will be advertised tomorrow in the paper, Commission, Council President Novak requested that it be advertised for the 1.5 million. So it, it's already on tap for the consideration. for the consideration at the June 28 meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
They preempted you.
I believe we have run out of agenda already. Should we come down to Commissioner comments? Commissioner Haney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Another busy couple of weeks here. First of all, I just want to say, you know, summer's in full swing. Get out, enjoy our parks. Been doing a lot of work with the parks. They've done an amazing job. They continue to. If you want to work outdoors, Parks is hiring. Please go to our website. A number of different departments are hiring. If you're looking for employment with the county anywhere, check out the website. We are hiring almost all, almost every department has some sort of opening, including the parks, which really could use somebody who wants to be outdoors with a green thumb. There's the Nature's Tiny Tots out at Lower, which is free, which is going to be going on a couple of times a month for June, July and August, as well as Discovery Days out there. There's a small cost for that, just for the supplies that are used. But again, that's June, July and August as well, a couple of weekends in there. Pioneer Days at Creek Ridge Park, for example, that's a free event to attend. It's going out there. There's different things they do at Lower Park, Meet a Beekeeper, Health Awareness Days, a lot of cool stuff. So definitely get out there, enjoy everything at the lakes and the parks and the county has to enjoy. Anyway, I said it was a busy couple of weeks. Visits to the Health Department, EMS Building Commission, E911 Center a couple of times. And a shout out to the folks in the E911 Center. They cooked up breakfast the other morning for our, from our first responders in law enforcement. And I know Barb was there and we passed as we were coming in. You left at 12:30 and I got there about half an hour late at 12:30 in the morning because I fell asleep on the couch. And so rather than being there at midnight, I was in at 12:30. But it was great to see. Also visits out to the sheriff's garage. The vaccine clinic is running well. Their walk-ins are wide open right now. Feel free to schedule an appointment, but if you're looking, just, you know, got your time open, feel free to walk in there because there's, everything's available for you, up to three choices. So if you're in that lower age group, you know, 12 to 17, they've got Pfizer out there. If you want to do a single-shot J&amp;J, that's out there. If you prefer Materna, that's out there as well. So it's kind of dealer's choice for that, whatever you'd like. Done a lot of work out at the fairgrounds. Community building's been repainted out there. They continue to do a ton of work out there. There's a Holstein show out there. I'm happy that people, everything's getting back to normal. Not a new normal, but an actual normal. So awesome-looking Holstein cows out there for, in the new beef barn at the fairgrounds for a show last week, which was cool to go and check out. And, you know, huge shout out to the animal shelter, not just for the renaming of it, but for all of the amazing work that they're still doing online from Facebook and Instagram, Twitter, the amount of pets that are out there. This is kitten season for those people who don't know. So there are tons of kittens as well as older cats. If you're looking for a chill older cat, there are a ton of those out there as well. So definitely check them out. I think that pretty much covers most of the thing. It's been a long meeting. So have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mateus?
Good night. I want to go out and enjoy the sunset. How about you, everyone? It's a beautiful summer evening. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Just quickly here, in a former life here, for nine years, I served as the liaison for all of the VFWs in the state of Indiana with Congress. Got to know all of our congressmen and all of our staff people. One of my favorite congressmen that I got along with, actually became personal friends, who left last year, didn't return, replaced by Congressman Mervan. Must pull my name out of a hat. I don't know. I was asked on the 10th to participate in a Zoom meeting. I can say that Congressman Visklosky has a guy who is very much, very much in his footsteps here with Veterans Affairs. Congressman Mervan is on the Veterans Affairs Committee and he was asked to chair a committee of technology and modernization. It's a subcommittee from the Veterans Affairs Committee. They're overhauling the electronic health record system for veterans. Suicide prevention is one of their top takes, which I pointed out to him. When you call the VA hotline, you get, well, if you're thinking of suicide, call 1-800-897-9530. I'm going, hey, what about punch five? You know, there's a guy ready to commit suicide and you're giving this, can you say that again so I can write it down? We had a lot of good ideas came up. They talked about something called BaWAVE, the backup of veterans who couldn't get into the facilities due to COVID. It's a big backup of that. And they have a huge shortage of qualified workers in the VA system. These are all things we're talking about. The other thing about claim sharks, people calling up veterans saying, I'm a veteran's advocate, let me help you since the backlog, let me help you file your claims. They're going to rip you off. You go to your veteran service officer and I wouldn't trust anybody else but them. So a very worthwhile committee that they've set up. I look forward to future meetings with them. It was really good. This past Friday, we had our regular meeting of the LEAP Legislative and Advocacy Committee. And we had a presentation by Lee Morris talking about redistricting. And he talked for about four, no, probably for about a half hour. Very interesting, very intricate situation with doing redistricting. Personally, I wasn't really a part of it. But then our regular monthly meeting about the courthouse in Michigan City, it is on schedule and on budget. We're doing good there. They might actually start doing tours again here in the next couple of weeks, which is pretty cool. And I can say a project that I have personally worked on for, starting on 15 years, the EMS base in Rolling Prairie, we are, we're pushing that forward too. I want to see that done. And you didn't do a quote tonight. What happened? I've got one ready, man. I'm ready to counter you here. Come on.
How about a short quote from Barnes and Thornburg lawyer last night, it was the night before last, at the AIC meeting, the County Commissioner meeting, AICC, Indiana Association of County Commissioners, talking about the ARP funds. And he said, don't be in a hurry, don't be in a rush. With the guidelines constantly changing, he said that, don't be afraid on that August report, first August report that's due, to put a big zero in there and wait and see what happens because, you know, even if nothing's allocated or spent, it's okay to send them a zero.
Well, I've come up with a quote I thought was very appropriate for what's going on in Washington DC right now, that's a crazy place, from Thomas Jefferson. "When governments fear the people, there is liberty. When the people fear the government, there is tyranny." With that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.